Hello, everybody. I'm Dylan Arant. I'm going to be replacing our president, Max Triton, for this debate. Unfortunately, he is sick and couldn't make it. And before we get started, just one quick note to anybody who might need to use the bathroom. There's a bathroom in this library. It is in the back over there. It is underneath that door with the librarian drive sign on it, if you can see that. So should any of you need to use the bathroom, please stop by there. And now I will turn it off to Alison.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. My name is Alison Fry. We really hope that this event will spread awareness about our school's politics and incorporate the community into this election. First, a bit about our club. Our debate team was created and developed by Lynette Williamson and has been competing since 1995. This year, our program has grown by a lot. Fundraisers really help us reduce the tournament entry fee costs for individual debaters, and we don't ever want cost to be a barrier to competition. So over the last 20 years, we have developed a legacy in parliamentary-style debate. Last year, we had teams qualify in both state and national championships. And recently, our debaters have been admitted to top colleges such as Princeton, UCLA, NYU, UC Berkeley, Northeastern, and UC Santa Barbara. We look forward to a really great turnout, and we thank all of you for coming and helping support this event. I would also like to throw in here that tomorrow, we're having another fundraiser. You all may have gotten one of these lovely flyers on your way in, and it's for a dine and donate at the Round Table in downtown Sebastopol. So if you would like to participate in that as well, we would really appreciate your support. Thank you.
So we have two candidates tonight. We have Debbie Ramirez and we have David Patrick Nagel. The rules of this debate are pretty simple. The first candidate is going to answer one of the questions provided by Alison or I. They have three minutes to answer it. Then the next speaker will talk for three minutes, and then followed by one-minute rebuttals for each side. And we decide who goes first by a coin flip, which we will be doing shortly.
We have a series of questions, and the debate will last about one hour. We have a concession stand located in the back, near the front door. And feel free to get snacks at any time, but please be aware of our speakers. We also ask that all participants and audience members retain decorum. This is an informative debate and not meant to be agitated. And without further ado... Oh, and one more thing. There won't be any questions from the audience permitted. And without further ado, let's welcome our candidates. Why are you running for the Board of Education? And if elected, what will be your priorities?
Well, first, before I get started, thank you very much, Alison, Mac, the whole debate club. Sorry, Dylan. This was a great event, great turnout, so thank everyone for coming. Excited to be here. I'm running for to return to the school board because I feel like I have work that's undone. I chose to apply for appointment because I was kind of tired of a lot of divisiveness in our community, and I thought that we needed to have someone step in that could be a leader, that could lead us forward, that could provide a level-headed business approach to financial things, and so I was excited to do that. I won appointment. And in the last year, I feel like I really got a lot of things done, but I feel like there's a lot of things left to do. So I would like to return for the two years of this election. This position is a two-year position this time. And then we will convert to by-district voting. So in the future, just so happens Debbie and I both happen to live in the district, but it will be by-district, and so that would only be voted on by the people that live in our community. So that's why I wanted to return, and I'm running to do it. We've come a long way in a year. You know, we've really done a good job of... We've gotten the budget kind of under control. We're really close to being completely out of deficit spending. I mean, I'd like to have see it two years in a row before I can stand up and make a proclamation that we are 100% out of deficit spending, but we really had a solid year last year, and we're really doing a lot of good things. And I've really had a good time sitting down with the CBO and with the new superintendent and kind of setting an example, looking at our budget, looking at our spend. We also resolved... I'm sorry. We signed a contract for our teachers and our classified staff, which really kind of put us in a good position. We got that done very quickly. I was able to kind of help with the negotiation of that, which kind of helps us move forward, right? We want to keep moving the district forward, so I was excited to do all that. My priorities: just continue with clear and concise communication, to listen, to, you know, be a part of the community, and by that, I mean the school community. Continue to focus on the budget, continue to make sure that our budget spend is appropriate to what we need and to have the money we need to do the programs that we have and to take care of our teachers. Is that the 32nd thing? Okay. And then obviously, lastly, I want to kind of continue to improve the staff and student experience here on the campus, right? I want us to be the best. That's my goal in kind of anything and everything I do, is to kind of choose to be great, because being great is a choice, right? So every day and every way, you choose to be great. You strive for that. Doesn't mean you achieve it every time, but you want that, and that's what I want us to do, because I want us to be the best high school. I want us to be... It's kind of weird. I want us to be the best high school in Northern California. And then when we're done with that, I want us to be the best in the state. We have the people, we have the students, we have the staff, and now we just need to do it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Alison and Dylan, for having me here, and the Debate Club for setting this up. I'm going to take this off. I'm running for the High School Board because education and the public education system in California has been a special interest of mine since 2010. I have a great deal of experience in school district governance, and I want our local schools to thrive. From what I've seen, the district's most urgent priorities are fiscal responsibility, engagement, and school climate. With fiscal responsibility, I think it's important that we get this structural deficit, which has been ongoing for more than a decade, under control. We have to allocate resources in alignment with community values and best practices. It's not just students and families who benefit from well-run schools. The whole community and local economy does better when our schools are stronger. Engagement is twofold. There's student engagement and community engagement. I support career-connected learning with a future-ready focus for students. The state has recently allocated $1 billion in ongoing funding, which means programming can be set up and staff can be hired for career technical education programming. We have to use these funds responsibly and not to plug the structural deficit. Stakeholder engagement is also important. I want to reestablish mandated programs like the Site Council, which we'll talk about later, the English Learner Advisory Committee. And I would also like to see a diversity, equity, inclusion committee set up so that some of the questions that community members have around that can be addressed. School climate... I'll just say one thing about that right now. In the countywide Youth Truth Study Survey, 26% of Annalee students report that they do not feel safe at school. Countywide, the number is 10%. It's not only a moral imperative to resolve this, it's also a legal one. I decided to run for this seat because during my nine-year tenure at Sebastopol Union School District, I learned about how to be an effective trustee. I participated in a great deal of professional development around school district governance and administration. I learned how to be part of a team. I learned about the importance of engaging the community. I learned how to address immediate needs. Is that done?
Nope.
I learned how to address immediate needs while always keeping an eye on long-term implications. I learned the value of creative ideas and that sometimes you start small to ultimately achieve big.
Now our candidates will deliver a one-minute rebuttal. Mr. Nagel will go first.
I'm good.
You're good? Good on both sides. Okay. So we will move on to our second question now. What particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member? And just really quickly, I think there's been some confusion on the timing system. So I'd just like to clarify that in case you guys didn't understand the first time. One tap signifies two minutes left. Two taps, one minute left. And three taps, 30 seconds left. And you will also see me holding... Two, one, and 30.
I didn't know there was a math class today. Can you hear better in the back? I got some comments that... Okay, I didn't speak loud enough, but I'll be better.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Perfect.
Are you going to ask a question or...?
Oh, sorry. Well, I will restate the question.
Oh, did you ask it already?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
No, we didn't hear that.
What particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
Well, thank you. So I have a great vast degree of skills and experiences in my life, but most importantly, starting with... I happen to be on the board now, which has given me great insight onto how to be on this particular board. We've come a long way in learning to work together and to maybe do things in a different manner, so that is one skill set. But I was a veteran in the military, and my specialty was intelligence. And it taught me to take information and listen to it without editorializing or opinionating that information. So you take in that information, you look at it at its face value, you research it, you then try to understand by taking another information before you ultimately make a decision. So I spent a lot of years doing that all over the world and lots of crazy experiencing at times, and that really helped me to become a very good business leader, which I have become now. I work for Mission Foods. I am in charge of all the sales and distribution from San Jose all the way to Oregon, all the way to Utah. I also call on Amazon nationally now. That's very exciting. But it's taught me to be very, very good at taking in information, which is important here on the school board, because you have to listen to everybody's opinion. You have to listen to the facts. You have to look at how that all plays together, and you have to sit down and make decisions that best interest the whole. Additionally to that, I have a very good ability to really set goals and to really help us move forward. I have, I don't know how, but I have always been able to look at very complex things, break it down into simple steps for us to achieve, and then go backwards and make that work. I spent some time with some of the folks talking about our career technical education, where do we want to see the program in five years, and what do we need to do to get it there? And I think that's really been a great experience for me to be that. Also, I'm just a very good listener, and I like to hear what people have to say, and I like to do that. But it's important to ask yourself a very simple question, which is where we are, where we're going, and what we need to do to get there. That, for me, is how I kind of run everything. The last thing is, I believe, in the inverted pyramid on the board. You're at the top of an org chart. Under that is the superintendent, administrative staff, all that down. But I believe in flipping that upside down and being a servant leader, meaning that everyone else's needs are what's most important. It trickles down to me, and I have to make the ultimate decision to move that forward.
So I moved to Sebastopol when my sons were one and four years old and immediately got involved in their school programs to support both them and their schools. The youngest is now a senior here at Annalee. My extensive involvement has allowed me to see the education system from many different perspectives. I've been involved with preschool, Parkside Elementary, Pinecrest Elementary, Brookhaven, and Annalee Schools. I've served on their site councils and volunteered in the classroom. I have fundraised and built community through helping with the foundations and teaching parent education classes. As both an observer and a participant, I have seen how active community members, through creative ideas and hard work, have an impact on our schools. I learned about district governance by serving as a trustee on the Sebastopol Union School Board, including many terms as president and clerk for nine years, from 2010 to 2019, at which time my children moved on to high school. By working in the classroom, both as a volunteer and as a classified instructional aide, I learned about the challenges and rewards of teaching. Through site councils, I learned about school site organization and choices. Through foundation work, I learned about community building and parent engagement. Ultimately, with my nine years as a school board trustee, I learned about district governance and school finance, serving on the Sebastopol Union Budget Committee as recently as last year. My direct experience with the high school district began in 2016, when my eldest entered Annalee. I've been an observant and engaged high school district parent since then. I served on the Annalee Site Council in 2017 and 18, and I read all of the posted board meeting agendas and occasionally provide public comment. And that's all.
Do you want to offer a rebuttal?
Not for that. Thank you.
Okay. So our third question is, what elements in the school need improvement, and how will you help to make it happen?
Well, one of the very biggest things we need to improve is we need to get some work in our facilities, particularly air conditioning in our classroom in the main building. This is long overdue. This is something that the board is taking up this week, actually. I'm excited. Hopefully, we can get a good plan, and that plan gets approval from the board. But we need to continue to look at our facilities, continue to look at all of our facilities, and make that a priority. Prioritizing the work, of course, by need and by financial impact and out of our bond. But so that's the first one. We really need to look at our facilities and continue to upgrade them and make them state-of-the-art, and continue to make them usable for our students. Secondly, we need to work on continuing to improve our culture. We've done a lot of work starting that. We've had speakers in this week, actually, to help us get along. We've had Keith Hawkins here for the Day of Understanding. Did you guys participate? Was that good? Love to hear more feedback later because, you know, that's something that's a multi-year program, so I'm excited to kind of continue that. And then some teachers had some professional development today, actually. Was that... How was that? Was that good? So, and that's the thing, is we need to kind of collaborate and look for development opportunities for our teachers to get the professional development that they want. It's one thing to pay them. It's another thing to develop them into the very best teachers that they can become. So that's something I would like to improve as well. We need to continue to grow our offerings to reflect the needs of our students. We have a really, really robust career technical education. You'll hear it referred to as CTE. We have about a third of our students that take CTE pathway classes. And so we need to continue to look at that and reflect upon what it is that they want to do. A perfect example is we approved the athletic training class this year. It went from a small section of people that right at the beginning of the year to now it has three sections already, and they have plans for the future. That's obviously something that's very interesting to our students. We need to continue to look to do that. And that starts with, you know, the admin staff and the teachers and counselors listening, and then putting that into thing. But also, you know, when we look to... When you talk about improve, we also have to be real honest about where we are, as I mentioned before. And one of the things that I get frustrated is that we are doing a lot of things here really, really well. Unfortunately, the only thing that makes the paper or the only thing that people get excited about are the things where maybe we stub our toe and we don't do well. We need to do a better job of shouting out how good we're doing here, how good our students are, and how well our teachers are doing, and how great our programs are. Keith Hawkins was a speaker. For those of the parents in the crowd who don't know, he came and spoke to our students about a Day of Understanding. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. He was very impressed with you and the students. He had nothing but great things to say about the students and the staff as they were sitting together. So I take a lot of pride in that because that means a lot to me that we're doing something well. So, thank you.
So I've outlined the top priorities that I believe the district should address. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about how, as a trustee, I'll help make that happen. The board operates as a whole in setting vision and strategy for the district. The board sets policy in alignment with local priorities, best practices, and legal mandates. The board hires and in public meetings directs their one employee, the superintendent, who is responsible for planning and implementation and oversees through a number of accountability measures. I see these improvements being achieved through the setting of clear goals for the administration team and utilizing community engagement tools, such as site councils, the English Language Learner Advisory Councils, and other committees that may be formed, as well as public board meetings to help determine community priorities. Similar to how a clear rubric is important to students, a clear vision and goals are critical to school administrators. And that's the role of a school board trustee.
I just want to point out, maybe a difference in opinion. Although it is true, the board has one direct report. The board has 1,500 people that it is responsible for. It is not just the superintendent that we have to pay attention to and/or manage. We need to look at everything that's happening in the school to be able to make informed decisions. So yes, we have one direct report, but 1,500 people that we are responsible for.
Okay, we will now be moving on to our next question. Given all of the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Well, you just have to do it. No, I'm kidding. You know, at the bottom line, you have to have, you know, intense focus, right? And the focus on what is truly important, and that is, at the end of the day, it is our students, right? What you guys can do, what you guys achieve, and what offerings that we're doing to set you up for success. If we're not doing something right, then we need to address it and look at it. So the first thing is that I have tried to do in my year here is to actively seek out input from those that feel that we have areas to improve, such as the students. I see a couple in this room that I meet with every month. And the activist club and I, we sit down along with the superintendent and the principal, and we talk about things that they think that we should be improving, things that they think that we need to be addressing. The beautiful thing about these meetings is outside of a board meeting, you actually have some real opportunities to have real conversations. It's not, you know, in the board meeting, there's rules, there's things that have to go. But to sit down and have a meeting across from the students and hear from them directly, have them have an opportunity to ask us questions and answer some of their questions is a really good start to stay focused on what's important. The other thing you have to do is you have to be present. You have to be able to communicate. You have to show up, and you have to listen. Like I said, if you really want to know what's going on here, you know, talk to Mr. David Carey right there. He knows what's happening here. Ask him. Ask him what he sees. Go to a volleyball game, go to a football game, go to a play, go to a concert. Those things give you the opportunity to hear and see what's really happening and then focus on things that you can improve. As I mentioned, I do have a simple goal of being the best, and that is something that I strive for every day. I believe in perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence. And Vincent Pardi said that. And it's something that I try to do in my life, not just here, but in everything. I don't always hit that goal, but it is something that we can do to stay focused because at the end of the day, pay attention to the things that really matter, and that is, where are our kids telling us? And how are they being successful or not? And then change the plan to accommodate that.
Given all of the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
So a school's primary responsibility is student achievement. And the mission statement of this district states that student achievement is our top priority. Attendance is important to student achievement. Students cannot learn if they're not in class. Feeling safe at school increases attendance and engagement. Engagement is also boosted with career-connected learning, making connections between what happens in the classroom and what happens out in the real world. I wholeheartedly support the countywide efforts to bring more career technical education, CTE, and work-based learning to our schools. These engaging programs help students develop a vision for what they may want to do after graduation and boost classroom engagement. I fully support development of career technical education programs, work-based learning, and other initiatives currently underway in our district, as well as countywide programs that support our students in staying interested and engaged in school and becoming future-ready young adults. Assuring that every student feels safe at school is a way to boost achievement. And to that end, as a board member, I would advocate to prioritize school climate issues, such as racism and sexism.
Would either candidate like a one-minute reputation? Question number five. Will the Board of Education work with the student body to resolve school issues? And if so, how?
Well, I kind of already answered this. But by having meetings with the student activist group, I would, of course, continue that if I were to have the honor of being elected. That's just one piece. The next piece is, again, like I mentioned, is to continue to find ways to be accessible and to listen and to hear. You know, I think out of a lot of the things that we've learned in the last couple of years is that everybody has an opinion, and we all need to take them on board because they all matter, and we need to really listen to that. We've been through a lot. You know, we've had fires and floods and COVID and strikes and, you know, consolidation, rebranding, not rebranding. All of that has weighed heavily on our staff, our students, and our community. And so for me, is to look at the people that has impacted the most. And I was actually talking to one of our counselors, and he gave me just, it was last year, but he gave me this incredible statistic that kind of blew my mind, and that is, last year's freshmen had last been on campus as sixth graders. So they went from being a sixth grader to then being thrust into the high school format as a freshman. to then being thrust into the high school format as a freshman. And that, of course, led to lots of interesting things. So the question is, how do we work together with the student body and be accessible to them? And the only thing that I can think of is to continue to do what I have been doing, which is actually sitting down, meeting with them, listening to them, having them ask me questions. And if they have questions they don't want to do in that format, those that have my phone number are welcome to call me. And those that want to meet, we can put together a meeting because I do want to honor what they have to say. Because it's our school, it's our community. And I do agree with what Debbie said earlier, and that is that if we produce great kids, that means we have great community members in the future. So if we can listen now and make adjustments now, then we can continue to create great community members.
Can you read the question again? It just helps.
I know.
Yes. Will the Board of Education work with the student body to resolve school issues? And if so, how?
Yes. I hear the student voices. In education, we talk a lot about helping our students develop agency. This student body is impressive in your courage to speak up and organize for what you need. One of the main reasons I am running for this seat is to support the students in being heard and their efforts to not only make their own school experience better, but to improve the experience for the cohorts coming up next. Those students that are still in middle school and elementary school. I mentioned site council as one of the community engagement tools that a school board uses to develop district priorities. A high school site council is made up, at the minimum, with one quarter of the members required to be students. Additionally, I support the development of a district advisory committee, which would include student members to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. Students cannot learn if they do not feel safe. This is an issue that is not only urgent to assure student achievement, but it is also a moral and legal imperative to address.
Do either speaker have a one-minute rebuttal? No? Okay, we will move on to the next question. What is your opinion about how the bond monies have been used or are planned to be used?
I think, I can't really speak too much for the past. I wasn't on the board, it wouldn't be fair of me to weigh in on that. But as a taxpayer, I think we had some missteps there. I think we didn't use the money as judiciously as we could or should have. A lot has changed since those decisions have been made. And all I can do is commit to how we're going to do it going forward. And going forward, we're going to look at a master plan, look at the priorities of that plan, and do the things that need to be done in the order in which they need to be done. For instance, air conditioning in the main building needs to be moved to the top of the list. We need to look at our future spaces for our required teachings, such as if we continue to grow our CTE spaces like culinary and ag mechanics, we need the space to actually teach culinary and ag mechanics. So we need to look at that. We need to reach out to all of our partners, our educational partners, and we need to come up with a solid plan and invest properly and wisely. The word trustee means we are entrusted with the taxpayers' money. So we need to continue to strive to have a good, clear plan, be deliberate with our spend, and be deliberate with how we do what we do. It's not about, this would be nice to do, or this might be kind of neat if we did this. It's about what do we have to do, what must we do? And how do we do that in the most inexpensive way possible? Because we only have so much money, and we have to stretch it. And also, we have to be a little bit quicker to get things done because every minute we wait, our money is actually worth less because everything is getting more and more expensive. So I have a lot of experience in this world. In my company, I do manage facilities, 11 of them. I am very aware of the costs, I'm very aware of how to get things done. And I will work very closely with the bond committee, the superintendent, to ensure that our priorities and our spend is done accurately, quickly, and we get things moving and get them done in a timely manner so that we can have students use those facilities. Because at the end of the day, that is what we're supposed to be doing.
So as I've been meeting with community members over the course of this campaign, one question that comes up sometimes is, why should I care about the school board? I don't have kids or grandkids in our schools. If you live in the Westonoma County Union High School district boundaries, you're either paying off the Measure A bond, or your landlord is, if you're housed. District facilities are owned by the public. Trustees hold in trust your taxpayer dollars. There's a great deal of deferred maintenance that must be addressed, especially at this campus. Schools fund this sort of maintenance and improvements not with educational general fund dollars, but through voter-endorsed bond funds and developer fees. The school board agenda posted for later this week has a bonds expenditure report with discussion and action around upcoming bond-funded projects. I encourage members of the community to attend that meeting in order to learn more and engage with the bond expenditure planning process. It is tragic that taxpayers will be paying off the construction of a state-of-the-art performing arts building at Almolino that students are rarely able to access. That bond will be paid off for years to come. And hopefully, the community will find, the school district will find some use for the community to take advantage of that space because it is owned by all of us, whether you're in school or you're not.
Would either candidate like a one-minute rebuttal? All right. Our next question. The district has seen so much turmoil in the last five years, specifically in the consolidation. How will this history inform your role as a trustee?
You're right. We have had a lot of tumult in this district in the last five years. And we've seen a lot of tumult in our country in the last five years, but we've kind of doubled down here and added some. And the heart of your question is, how does history inform your role? The big thing for me is to focus on things that we didn't do well and then do them well if we ever have to do them again. So we can't duplicate our mistakes. One of the big mistakes was the communication with our community. I wasn't on the board at the time when the consolidation vote occurred. I was not on the board when the vote was taken to rebrand the school, then to pause rebranding, and then to go to a bridge name. I wasn't here for those discussions. But as a community member, what I saw was a general lack of true transparency and deliberateness in communication. Meaning that if we had to look at the closure of one of our comprehensive high schools, wouldn't the smart thing to have been to work with the district, to have worked with the CBO, to create a number when we reached a certain enrollment and have everyone know that number years in advance? Like if the enrollment hits 1,500, it's going to trigger conversations about having to look at closing one of our schools. We didn't do that. So if we ever get in a situation like this, you need to clearly communicate. You need to really tell people the truth. You need to sit down and tell them the hard truth that, hey, we're headed down a road. We need to make better decisions. I think I've done that in the year that I've been on the board. I think that has earned me the trust of our staff and our teachers. Our teachers have endorsed me. And I think a lot of it has to do with the way in which I carry myself and my communication style in that I'm very honest to a fault, and I tell people what's happening, where we need to go, and what we need to do. It's not always easy, but that is something that we need to learn from our mistake, and we need to do better. The other thing, the second part of the question you didn't ask this time, but it was, you know, whether the benefits are harmful consolidation? Do you want us to go that, or did you want to scrap that? Okay. You know, there are pluses and minuses with consolidation. I'll go real quick. We were able to standardize offerings for all of our students. Obviously, some harms is that, you know, we have a loss of identity from our kids from their school. And we need to strive to kind of close that gap.
A lot has happened in five years. My eldest was a freshman here at Annaly in 2016-17, the year the Office of Civil Rights Agreement between the district, the U.S. Department of Education, and the OCR went into effect. Five years later, there's still room for improvement. As I've already discussed, this is a top priority for me. My youngest was a freshman in 2019-20, the year of the teacher's strike, the February flooding of the Russian River and evacuations, and of course, the start of the pandemic in March with lockdowns, frozen grades, distance learning, learning curves, separation from peers, social distancing, and general anxiety around the unknown. I do not believe that it was in the best interest of students and student achievement to choose to consolidate at that time. When I was on the Sebastopol Union Board, we consolidated Pinecrest Elementary to Brookhaven, creating a K-8 campus. While these schools were only blocks away from each other, the school board recognized the significant impact for the communities involved and took care to incorporate the public in a well-designed and carefully implemented merger. High schools are much more complicated than elementary schools with transcripts, college applications, sports eligibility, club charters, and in this case, long-term community rivalries that at times rose to more than friendly. These factors, plus the fact that a redistricting study had just been commissioned and the district budget allowed for it, should have delayed the consolidation long enough to plan it out well. As foreseen by the chief business official who presented the budget outlook data, consolidation did not resolve the decades-long structural deficit. I've mentioned some harms already. Another harm is the loss of enrollment. District enrollment declined 9% the first year of consolidation and almost 7% this year, for a total decline over two years that equals 15%. This is in contrast to the six prior years, from 2014 to 2020, with a total 10% decline in enrollment. Historically, the district had been able to forecast freshman enrollment based on an expectation that 80% of students from our feeder middle schools will attend this district. This year, that formula proved to overestimate freshman enrollment by 136 students. While other factors could be at play, the chaos, decreased accessibility, and school climate issues are certainly important factors to consider. People who know me well will tell you that I'm an optimist by nature. I always look for the silver lining in any seemingly negative situation. I'll have to tell you about that another day.
Would anybody like to provide a one-minute rebuttal?
Can I rebut myself? Yeah, I can? Okay.
So in the case of this consolidation, I do see a few benefits. The community has engaged with our schools in a way that hasn't been seen for a long time. More people are paying attention to district governance and are interested in seeking solutions to the current challenges, many of which are faced by school districts throughout the county and state. Although many of the challenges and changes have been difficult for our students, many of you have channeled these difficulties into positive action and civic engagement. I wish no one had to face these challenges. Yet if we are looking for benefits, these real-life lessons and experiences will serve you well as you go out into the real world. I've also heard anecdotal reports of students that otherwise may not have met because they would have been at different schools, and they've gotten to know each other and forged quality friendships. So that's positive.
All right, we will now move into our next question. What steps will you take to ensure a safe school environment for people of all genders and races?
This is a big question. A big question because there's not a clear and simple answer. So the question that you asked is, what will you? And I take that as me, what will you do? I personally have done a lot since I have been a trustee on this board around this topic. First and foremost, as we reviewed our policies and procedures, we've made sure that our policies are right. We've looked at make sure that zero tolerance in fact means zero tolerance. We've worked with the superintendent and the admin team to ensure that those policies are clear and concise, legal. They have worked with the admin staff and teachers, and that work continues because it's not just a one-time thing. It's not like, oh, we've done this thing and we're all better now. This is a constant pursuit of trying to do better. Another thing that I have been instrumental in communicating with was when we hired our new superintendent back in May, before he even started on the job. We had conversations about what can we do? And he brought us Keith Hawkins, and we made that happen. He was a great speaker, and he had a great opportunity to come and talk to the kids about a day of understanding. And I will sum up his message in one sentence by saying, "When you look at someone, you have no idea what they're dealing with." It doesn't mean what color their skin is, or what their sexuality is, or what their gender is. It just means when you see them, you don't know what's happening on the inside, their own personal struggles, what they're dealing with. And if we're a little more understanding of them and that, then maybe we can just do better. All of that this week kind of reminded me of a quote that means a lot to me. And it goes as follows, and I'll read it. "If a lot of small people in a lot of small places do a lot of small things, they can change the face of the world." For me, this simply means if we can be a little bit better, and if you can do a little bit better, and you, and you, and you, being more understanding, us as a community being more understanding and be a little bit better than we were before, then we'll get further and we'll be better. We also have a quarterly meeting with the NAACP, attended by our superintendent and our principal. We check in, this is a proactive meeting, so that we know that we're doing things, we're doing them on the right track. We also had an OCR review recently, and the OCR said that we were really doing outstanding work here. And that goes back to something I said earlier tonight, which is simply that there's a lot of great things happening here, but we only focus on the bad. We only focus on the things that aren't working well as opposed to rewarding those people that are working really hard to do a lot of great work. So I'm really proud of where we started and where we're headed. It's a long road and a long journey. We're not there yet, but a lot of good work has gone into this. And I think everyone has taken a part of that, including the students who actually took part in Keith Hawkins stuff because you actually had to do something. You actually had to stand up and be a part of it. And that wasn't easy, so thank you all for doing that.
So what steps will I take to ensure a safe school environment for people of all genders and races? It really breaks my heart that this has to be addressed. There are federal protections to ensure a safe school environment for people of all genders and races. This has to be a top priority for the school board and the administration. Because these problems currently exist, we must actively and proactively engage in making changes. I support the student policy recommendations presented to the board in May of 2022 and the input provided just last month through a joint board presentation made by students and Superintendent Chris Meredith. These recommendations include trainings, staff resources in the form of a dedicated coordinator, work on an effective discipline approach. And we should remember that the root of the word "discipline" is "instruction."
I did want to point out that on the agenda, we do have a job description for a part-time coordinator to work with Title II, VI, and IX issues. So that is something that came out of the student group that we're going to be doing. Well, if it passes the board, I should say. And to point out that we're taking a leading role in this. There's not many school districts, in fact, I think there's only one, which I believe is Rankin Valley, that actually even has this. SCO just hired this position. So we're taking a proactive approach, and we're leading forward. We're not just sitting around waiting. We're actually moving forward and doing something. And we're going to go out and do it before everybody else does it because we believe in it's the right thing to do.
All right, question number nine. What is your opinion on maintaining a seven-period schedule? Additionally, how will budget decisions affect elective classes?
I'm a very strong proponent of electives in the seventh-period day. I think electives are the thing that helps students that don't necessarily love math, sorry if there's a math teacher in here, but that they really, it excites them. Things like drama, or music, or cooking, or culinary ag. Those are the things that people actually really, really enjoy. And it kind of helps them find their people and grounds them in their culture and keeps them coming to school. I was not a great student when I was in school. I did well enough because I had electives and I got to play sports, and I needed to maintain a certain GPA, and that was important to me. And I think that's really important to a lot of kids. Our seventh-period day gives us the great ability to offer lots of different electives. It also gives us the ability for kids to keep them engaged, but at the same time giving them flexibility in their schedule to get the requirements done. I also want to point out that about 26% of our enrollment is transfers from outside of our district. They're coming here because of our diverse offerings. So about 387 of our students, of our 1,467 students are transferring in to take these classes. So when you ask about how does that impact the budget, we need to be very careful when we look at that because it's an easy thing to say, oh, if we just eliminated seventh-period day, we could reduce headcount, we could save money. But how many of those 387 kids would no longer come here? So you have to really sit and really think about what would the impact be more than just the seventh-period day? Because if we eliminated, let's just say, 387 students no longer came here, that's a $5.5 million loss right there of ADA revenue. How would we be able to overcome that? So that's one of the things that I really take very, very seriously. I think the seventh-period day is essential. I don't call them electives, I call them essential electives because I feel that they are important to our students. It attracts people to our district, and we need to expand, not contract on that. It attracts people to our district, and we need to expand, not contract on that.
This is the only state-funded school district in Sonoma County that has a standard seven-period day schedule. According to Sonoma County Superintendent Dr. Harrington's report in June, district administration here is currently in discussion with advisors from the County Office of Education to evaluate the wisdom in continuing the practice in light of the ongoing structural deficit. Administrators have presented hybrid options in the past, which would allow students who wish to take advantage of additional programming during optional before and/or after-school course offerings. Taking into consideration that fewer than half of Annaly students utilized seven periods during the 2020-21 school year, and 20% were taking classes for credit without content such as TA and OfficeAid, it appears that there may not be, that there may be an opportunity to more effectively offer a wider variety of content-based electives if a hybrid six-seven-period schedule were offered. Electives are critical for our students to achieve a well-rounded education, and they provide a great way to explore a variety of curriculum pathways. If elected, I will look forward to delving into how to best utilize the resources we have to provide the widest variety of engaging elective classes possible.
Any rebuttals? No? Okay. Now we will move on to our final question. Are there any final comments or topics you would like to discuss?
First thing foremost, again, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming. It's great to see the room full. You guys did a great job, and I'm glad we could raise a little bit of money for your club. You know, I view this as my opportunity to kind of bring up why me? I've worked really hard to do the job in a way that I thought was the right way. I've been fortunate enough and, you know, blessed enough to get the endorsement of our teachers here at Annaly and Laguna, the Special Ed Consortium, Sebastopol Elementary Teachers from Brookhaven and Parkside. I was just informed tonight that the Grammstein Unified District has endorsed me with Hillcrest and Grammstein, and the Democratic Party has all endorsed me. Which, for me, makes me feel like I've done it the right way. It's hard. This is not an easy task, right? You're a volunteer. There's no money, there's no financial benefit to do this. You're doing it because you want to do something for your community. You want to serve your community. My grandfather always told me, and he was an apple farmer here in town and graduated from Annaly in the 1930s, is that you don't have the right to complain unless you're willing to do something to fix it. So for me, I'm here because I was willing to do something to fix it. It wasn't always easy. A lot of people wrote me not-so-nice emails. A lot of people said a lot of nice-on-nice things about me. I've learned a lot about myself. Not a lot of it's true, but I've seen a lot, I've heard a lot. But more importantly, I wanted to make this the school that I wanted it to be, and I want it to be the best. And for me, that's what it's really about. So I'm happy and proud to have done the job that I've done. And I'm hopeful to continue to do it into the future. Because I want to do it, not because there's any glory. You know, you didn't know that, right? They're not paying us, right? But no, so again, I thank everyone for coming. If anyone wants to ask me questions, I know we're not taking questions from the audience. I will stay. I'll be right there in that corner. You want to come yell at me about something, I'll happily listen. And again, thank you all for coming. And again, you guys, thank you for putting on a great opportunity and great event.
So thank you, Allison and Dylan, for stepping in the 11th hour in the Debate Club for putting this great, well-organized event together. I hope we raise lots of money so the Debate Club can participate in many competitions this year. I also wanted to acknowledge today, on Indigenous Peoples' Day and every day here in the Westonoma County Union High School District, we live, work, and play on the native lands of the Southern Pomo, Coast Mewoc, and Kishaya. Today is a day to honor the cultures and histories of the Native American people and look toward their wisdom and valuable insights into how we can live life more sustainably today and into the future. If anyone in the audience would like more information about my perspective on the topics we covered here this evening, or if you'd like to see a list of testimonials from county elected officials, area school board trustees, teachers, school staff, students, and community members who endorsed my candidacy for this position, you can visit my website, which is Debbie Ramirez four, number four, schoolboard.com. And I think some of my committee members and volunteers who are here in the audience have some flyers with that website information on it. If you want to get something. Thank you.
Any last rebuttals?
Oh, no.
Okay. Then I'm going to give a quick closing word. So let's give another hand to our two candidates. So I just really quick wanted to say another thing about the Debate Club because this is a great fundraiser for us. We're super excited to have been able to put this on. And I would like to just quickly recognize all the debate members that we have that have come to this event. So could all of you please stand? In past, we haven't had this many members, and we're super excited to offer a lot more tournaments and a lot more opportunities for kids to come in. And this fundraiser will really help with that. Again, I'm going to mention it. We have a dine and donate tomorrow. If you go to Roundtable, we can get some of the proceeds and just from you ordering, and that would be very helpful. So just putting that out there. Thank you, everyone.